Commission meeting on Monday, August 21st, 2017. Let the record show that we are minus one commissioner, Mr. Altman's. First thing up, the order of business, are there any changes, Mr. Kessel, to the order of business?
President Decker, we don't have any changes to items, but I do want to make the commission aware that we do have a couple of staff absent today. City engineer Kubis and public works director Zurov are both absent, and Ms. Marshick will fill in for Mr. Kubis, and Aaron Prouse will be here to fill in for Mr. Zurov.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Anyone have any questions or concerns on the order of business? Now I'd look for a motion to approve the order of business.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the agenda passes. The consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss with staff?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff on the consent? Not will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have multiple 5:00 PM timetable hearings, so we'll move on to the non-time table. The first one up is the reappointment of a CVB board member. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Decker. The CVB has requested that the city commission appoint, reappoint, actually, Kristi Schwartz to the CVB. She currently sits on the Convention and Visitors Bureau. A reappointment would mean an extension of another three years to her existing appointment and would conclude in August of 2020. So it is the CVB and staff recommendation that Mrs. Schwartz be reappointed to the CVB.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kessel on this appointment of Mrs. Schwartz to the CVB board? We have a motion to appoint Mrs. Schwartz to the board.
Second.
And a second. Any questions, discussion? I know Mrs. Schwartz is in the audience, so if you would have any questions for her Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approval of Mrs. Schwartz to the CVB. Next up, we have the telephonic meeting ordinance. Mrs. Kreip.
Mr. President, members of the commission, this is a first reading of ordinance. It's first reading of the telephonic meeting ordinance, which was requested by the commission after some scheduling conflicts and urgent business, getting bills paid. So as the memo states, there's a couple of different ways that this can be accomplished. You can either have a whole meeting by telephonic means if there's a need for kind of an emergent circumstance, or you can allow individual commissioners to appear telephonically. So right now, it seems, I think the ordinance is written so that it would be, it would allow a wider variety, but there are requirements that the meeting would be originated from city commission chambers. It would still be open to the public, and it would have to be audio, and then you'd still, you'd have to do a roll call vote for each person to make clear for the record and for the minutes. So if there's any feedback, questions, or comments before?
Any questions for Ms. Kreip from commissioners or staff on this ordinance? Mrs. Ordinance?
I believe it's 1639 is the number.
Yeah.
Because I have 1638. I think it's just a typo. I think it's 1639. I have 1638 later on.
1639.
Mr. President, I don't have any questions specifically. I just want to say I think this is really convenient. If someone were to be out of town or couldn't make it due to sickness, they'd still be able to be present and voting as a member of this body. I know we included in here as well that there's some stipulations where there would have to be some notice. You know, this obviously can't be something that's relied on, which I think is really important, but I'm glad that we took the steps to create this ordinance. So I would move to approve ordinance number 1639.
Any other questions, concerns?
So just a quick point of clarification, Mr. President. The ordinance as drafted doesn't have any of the stipulations that are in the memorandum. I wasn't sure if you wanted those or not. If you do, we can insert them for a second reading, or you can move to amend now, and either way.
Is there anything in the memo that you, commissioners, that you want into the ordinance? The one thing that concerns, I guess, concerns me, especially with next year's schedule, is six of our meetings fall under holidays. And I guess this is for Mr. Steiner, since he's been here the longest. Have our meetings always been on Mondays?
They have, but if, you know, with the holiday falling on Mondays, we usually head them to Tuesday.
Right.
Otherwise, we'd have maybe even the third week, or the second week, excuse me, or the fourth week, depending. There's two or three different options that we have done, you know, so I don't think it's an issue that when we come up against it, we'll just decide at that time.
Okay. Well, I was even going to make this suggestion that we, you know, just think about, maybe we move our meeting to Tuesday night as a regular because of the holidays. So that's something we can discuss later. I know there's six holidays next year we fall under, so, and that would give staff that extra day, once you get it out Thursday, sometimes Friday morning. That'd give us a whole day to review, and then Monday, if it is not a holiday, gives you a whole day to answer questions before we start. So just something to consider. Is there anything in the memo that we want put in as amendments into this ordinance?
I personally think the stipulations make sense. I mean, we don't want just three people calling in randomly and having it be a meeting, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So at least if there's a quorum of people here, if one person calls in, then.
I agree also. I know there's some cities in our locale that have telephonic meetings, and I think it becomes a habit. So we don't want that.
And we know the commitment, you know, when we choose to run for this office. So, you know, I think it's important to be, to avoid having people as possible, but also invite them to participate.
Right. So I think that one, that there's at least three physically present.
Right.
Or to be a quorum.
Yep. One other note about the ordinance that I didn't put in the memo is that I updated, while I was revising the code, I updated the first paragraph of that section. The meeting time was, what, the old meeting time, so it said, I think, 5:15 in the code still, and since we'd moved the meeting time, I just updated it since I was already, already in there.
Okay. Any more questions or comments for Ms. Kreip from commissioners or staff? This is a public hearing.
This will be your first reading?
Yep, the first reading, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to come forward, state your name and your comments or questions about this telephonic meeting Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. I would look for a motion to either approve or deny this telephonic meeting ordinance.
Move to approve first reading.
Is that with the amendments?
With the amendments.
With the amendments.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance with amendments and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We'll move on. Mr. Kessel, the SSBCI 2016 Annual Report and Data Set.
Thank you, President Decker. SSBCI stands for the State Small Business Credit Initiative. This was an effort that was created by federal legislation. The federal legislation passed in 2010, and shortly thereafter, there was an initiative amongst several local political subdivisions to form a local chapter and make funds available for businesses, small businesses specifically, to have access to loans. The city of Dickinson did choose to participate at that time, and we have participated ever since. We do have local board representation on the SSBCI team. They do meet in Bismarck, I believe quarterly is when they meet, and they've just submitted their annual report. So it's available at the website that is listed there. If you're interested in finding out what kind of dollars flow through and maybe who gets those loans, you can certainly access it by going to that website. So it's a nice option for some of our smaller businesses and entrepreneurs in Dickinson. The next item then is a, just a report on mobile home parks and the way that they're licensed. The city of Dickinson has been working with the state of North Dakota to take over the licensure or the permitting process of mobile homes. Currently, the state of North Dakota issues those permits, and the city of Dickinson is not involved. They do consult us on occasion, but ultimately, it is up to state staff to actually issue the permit, and they do that by applying their standards as opposed to the city of Dickinson's buildings and codes and code enforcement issues. So by entering into this MOU, we would take over the permitting process. We would use state adopt, or, excuse me, city adopted ordinances and codes, and we'd use the municipal court for enforcement as opposed to district court. So it brings a lot of local flavor, I'll call it, to this process and a lot of more local control. We weren't sure if we would be able to pursue this route, but there is precedence in both Fargo and Bismarck. They have also entered into MOUs with the state of North Dakota. We weren't sure we would be able to do it because we don't have staff, Department of Health staff like they do in those other larger cities, but that doesn't seem to be an issue with the state of North Dakota, and so we are pursuing a hopeful adoption of the MOU. Now, of course, that MOU will be before you, and so you'll be the ones to adopt, if you choose to, this effort. Our chief, Seavock, and building official, Schwint, are the local champions, and they are the ones who are kind of taking over this effort from here forward to make sure that our issues are covered in that MOU, and we have a clear understanding of what we're doing and moving forward. So if you have any questions, this is a fairly significant issue, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them if you, right now.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the MOU?
I would agree that I think it would be better under our direction than the state, you know, with the local handling control a bit. I think we know what's within our boundaries better than what the state probably does, and so on, so I would agree that this would be a good memorandum to partner with.
I should mention that the state has been very, very accommodating. They're very happy that we are interested in taking over these duties, and they've been very, we've met with them on two different occasions, had several phone calls, and so we should be able to bring an MOU to you within the next month or two.
Okay. Any more comments or questions for Mr. Kessel on this? Thank you, Mr. Kessel.
Okay, the next item then is this Stark County Weed Control Board. We received notice from that board that they intend to not renew our contract. So as of the end of October of 2017, it says 18 in your memo, we've clarified, and it does end actually in October of 17. The contract was for $50,000, and they sprayed noxious weeds inside city limits, certain areas inside our city limits. So we'll, we'll take over these duties with our existing staff. We do have equipment that is available to us. They were actually using a couple pieces of our equipment in the process. We'll get those two pieces back, and we'll be able to utilize them as we perform these duties. 2018 will kind of be a test year to see how well this goes. I can't tell you today if we'll need additional staff to perform these duties, but we are willing to try it out, and hopefully, we can do it with existing staff. If not, we might have to hire some summer staff to assist us in making sure that these duties are covered. Any questions about the Stark County Weed Control Board contract?
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the contract? Hearing none.
The next item is the expansion of the Spur Bar and Lounge. I don't believe there's any action required by the commission. This is more of an FYI. The Spur Lounge is owned by JK3S LLC, but they do business as the Spur Bar and Lounge. It is their intent to create an outdoor patio, much the same as other businesses have done in our downtown area. The difference here is that their outdoor patio will be contained all on private property. In the other three locations that I'm thinking they are on right away, and they have to come down once summer is over, this patio area is all on private property and will not have to come down. So what they're essentially doing is extending the reach of their ability to serve liquor and/or alcohol within that patio boundaries. So you can see there's a map, it's a little bit hard to read. Villard is actually on the right side of that map, so the patio will be close to Villard. They're pursuing these options as we speak, or at least the construction and such, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them on as.
Any questions for Ms. Kessel on the expansion of the Spur? Hearing none, Mr. Kessel.
That concludes my reports for this evening.
Okay. Next up is Ms. Kreip with Happy Hounds.
Mr. President, members of the commission, I want to provide a brief update to you, given the interest in Happy Hounds from the update, the planning and zoning meeting that happened last week. So the Planning and Zoning Commission started in a work session analyzing the approach they wanted to take to creating an ordinance to address the pet daycare issue. So the steps I had them go through were to define what a pet daycare is, which expanded outside dogs to any pet that's lawfully allowed within city limits, and then they decided to allow them within R1, and so that's what the draft ordinance will start with. And it would be through a special use permit process, so each applicant would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately City Commission to determine whether or not they would be granted that special use permit for their individual operation. And then finally, we went through some of the requirements they would expect to see. I do have the materials from Mrs. Yuran and Happy Hounds, and I think that, given the comments that everyone's made through the process, her operation is very well-run, and we'll use some of those guidelines, especially some of the things that she talked about with sanitation and safety procedures, vaccinations, things like that, that have been endorsed as kind of a best practice by the local veterinary community, as some of those basic templates for the starter of the conditions. So that's where we're at right now. We're going to have a draft ordinance for them at their next meeting that they'll look at in another work session, and then at the October meeting, they'll take action one way or the other. So you'll see it around that time.
Any questions or comments for City Attorney Kreip? No. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Public Library Forums. Library Director Ennen.
Mr. President, commissioners, I've come today just to inform you actually about a public library forum that we are holding tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the library. The library board is currently engaged in a process where we are updating our strategic plan, and this will actually be the second of our public forums. We just wanted an opportunity for members of the public to come, to hear a little bit about our plans, to share their thoughts and interests, ask questions, and express any concerns they might have that we should address during this process. So again, that is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the public library. Questions for me?
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I wanted to say thank you for the glasses. We used them today, and you guys are always doing such neat things at the library, and I know that many people in the community benefited from the glasses you gave out and the party you guys helped, so good job.
And we had a lot of fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
There is nothing from public safety this evening, so we'll move into engineering. We have about 10 minutes, and first thing up is 21st Street to 10th Avenue Shared Use.
Good evening, President Decker, commissioners. The first item is a cost participation and maintenance agreement for 21st Street from 10th Avenue and 10th Avenue for the trail. This agreement is a standard CPM agreement with North Dakota DOT with one exception. Our federal grant is limited to $250,000, so that makes our city portion of the project cost greater than 50%. DOT policy is for us, then, to pay the contractor and request reimbursement from the DOT. Typically, our projects run in a manner that the DOT pays and requests dollars from us. Because we are receiving direct payments of federal funds, we are required to be a Title VI program and have that in place. This puts the city of Dickinson in a random pool with about five local public agencies in North Dakota that could be federally audited for this Title VI compliance. In your memo, there was an excerpt included from the DOT manual. I can read through that if you'd like, or if you're up on that, I can skip it, but the city of Dickinson does make every attempt to be in compliance with these federal requirements, and the city staff recommends approval of the CPM agreement and Title VI compliance documents required to receive these federal funds.
Any questions or comments?
And just for the public, the Title VI is for the ADA, correct?
ADA and for, there's a little more to it than just ADA, but so that there is no discrimination.
Well, yeah, discrimination and then the broader.
Yeah.
Underneath discrimination.
Right. It's pretty specific they have, you know, worked out, but we have looked into those documents and are making sure that, to the best of our abilities, that we have all those compliance in place.
Any other questions or comments? What I'd look for then is a motion to approve the agreement.
Please to approve the CPM agreement with North Dakota DOT.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agreement approved.
Thank you.
I think we have time. We have seven minutes for the 2017 Millen overlay change order number two.
This item is change order number two for the 2017 Millen overlay. What we are looking to do is add 5th Avenue from Villard to 3rd Street into the project and remove Benton, Allen, and Carlson Streets. It also adds an area of pavement and base removable on 13th Street West, which was already in the plans to be Millen overlaid, but during project development this winter, snow and ice prevented a good visual inspection of those street conditions, especially along the parking lane and curb where the snow was piled up. Because of this, more work was required on a stretch of 13th Street than planned. Benton, Allen, and Carlson Streets have curbs that have failed in many locations, so we feel that paving those streets without fixing the concrete would be counterproductive. Adding the concrete replacement would exceed our budget for the project. We are working on a funding plan that will allow more of our future Millen overlay dollars to go into the pavement as intended. For this year's project, it was decided that those streets be removed and 5th Avenue East be Mill and overlaid, and by streets be removed, I mean Benton, Allen, and Carlson Streets, just to be clear. The net contract change due to this change order is negative $2,616.30. Inclusive of this change order, the project is tracking to come under budget by approximately $100,000. The intent would be to use this money in 2017 for miscellaneous patching and paving. We recommend approval of change order number two. Do you have any questions for me on this item?
Any questions or comments, commissioners or staff? Look for a motion to approve or deny the change order number two.
So move.
A motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
We have about four minutes. You can start on the truck route.
Sounds good. So this report is on the truck route along 8th Street Southeast, and part of our public input process for that section of street residents' concerns of continuing the use of a truck route along that corridor were heard. This map shows a potential change to the current truck route, which was adopted by resolution in August of 2014. It also shows a recommended change to the western truck route in Dickinson per a memorandum of understanding with the North Dakota DOT approved by commission last year. Any change to the truck route would be enacted through resolution, a draft resolution based on the 2014 resolution originally establishing the truck routes, was enclosed in your packets. The staff recommended changes are in yellow, and those are consistent with the DOT's MOA. The blue highlighted narrative would be removed if the southeast truck route is removed. Staff would recommend, but it is not required, to hold a public hearing before taking formal action on the resolution. Considerations for the eastern truck route are the following. Agricultural facilities operate on the eastern truck route, so loads will need to get to those destinations regardless of the truck route designations. Federal statutes require that transporters of hazardous materials stop at all railroad crossings, so for those transporters, it would be better served using State Avenue's new railroad bridge. An exemption for existing businesses as they exist on the eastern business loop would be an idea, and the truck route design right now is five foot of asphalt and 10, or five inches of asphalt, excuse me, and 10 inches of gravel versus four inches of asphalt over eight inches of gravel for a non-truck route. This equates to $1.7 million versus $1.5 million for the 8th Street reconstruction project, respectively. Of these construction costs, Dickinson is responsible for 20%. The project has been moving forward with the four inch of asphalt, eight inch of base design, but that could be changed. Do you have any questions for me on this report?
Any questions or comments on the?
Yeah, just to clarify, can we dim the lights again, please? The 8th Street Southeast, you're talking about removing the blue as a truck route.
Right, there's kind of a red bubble around that area. Yep.
So removing that one, okay, which I'm okay with, because I think if we ever need to put one in, it'd be a different area. However, in the northwest, is that, which exit is that, that you want to remove the truck route, the blue line?
That's 30th that goes by Cornerstone Bank and?
That's the interim bypass, and with that bypass completed, that has been discussion we've had with the police department.
So you want to remove that from the truck route?
And move to the.
Force them to go.
To the actual truck route.
West of 59?
Correct.
And then down around.
And I think we do need to consider some of the agricultural travel that happens on 8th right now and to get over to the livestock area and to the grain elevators in that area, and then allow those businesses that are sitting on the east side of that, the street there is, that's on, that heads north is?
Sixth.
Sixth. Allow those businesses to get a, be granted or grandfathered that they can still use that.
Right, I know there's like an industrial park off of Sixth.
If they, they're not allowed to use that, then they're going to have to loop down on the county road, the dirt road, and around the back by Ed's Honey, so that could cause some issues there, too.
Right.
Wouldn't that be considered a local delivery, though? Be like Cisco truck going downtown.
Correct?
Some of the truck traffic that utilizes the route that, along 8th and Sixth and such, actually doesn't go, their final destination isn't Dickinson. It may be a site in Richertan or somewhere east of us. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't qualify them for a local delivery if they're just traversing through.
So we just issue a special permit to those businesses on that side there, to a lot of them to use it?
If their destinations are certainly in town, yes. That's not a problem.
I thought that's what we were talking about, is that deliveries for that industrial park.
Yeah, we have
That would be a local delivery, so they would be exempt anyway.
Yeah, any, any kind of local delivery, correct? Maybe I misunderstood your question.
Maintain, you know, the truck if it wants to head south on 22 down Illinois. We don't want them cutting through there. We're going to force them to go two, three miles, whatever.
Come over the, the overpass.
We force them to go that way to go north, so it shouldn't matter if we force them
Go north or go
Right.
South, they gotta go all the way west to go south.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff? This is just a report, so
Correct.
We'll have a final. It'll be a resolution?
Yes, and we would like some direction as far as if you would like to have that public hearing before you move forward.
Any comments, Commissioners?
What was that, a public hearing?
Well, they made a couple
Required.
Got static.
They made a couple suggestions on the agricultural, to allow ag coming off of 22 to still use it to get over, say, like to livestock or?
And in the process, I don't believe that there's a public hearing required, but staff thinks that it would be a good idea to hold one with these different issues going on. But we would like your direction.
I, I think you should proceed with the public hearing, just to see if, if there's something that comes out we may have missed.
One
Sure there will be. Mr. Hesel?
If I could just make one more comment. The cost of creating the infrastructure to behave like a truck route, as is reported, is about $40,000. We paid 20% of the 200 after the matching dollars. Consider, if you would, putting those dollars into the project, just in case, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, there's a different thought with regard of using this as a truck route. And in that eventuality, we would be covered. That road could be used, even by this commission saying, no, we don't want to use it as a truck route. If we don't upgrade the street, then we don't have that ability later on without rather significant cost. Just something to consider anyways.
I wouldn't be opposed to, I don't think it would be, just basically beefing the road up.
Yeah.
So it's there.
Right. Create it, build it as a truck route, but don't use it as a truck route initially.
Okay. You need any other direction or?
Nope, that's
Okay.
Works for me. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Move on to the 5 o'clock timetable. We have an abatement hearing. First up is 1785 First Street West. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. And we do have several properties before you tonight that have filed applications for abatement of taxes. We will start with the 1785 First Street West. It is a retail property. It's located at the corner of Villard and State Avenue. And the value that the city has on that property is $1,500,000. That value was arrived at by the mass, the commercial mass appraisal that we had Vanguard do for us, and so it was part of that study. The applicant is Ronald Kirchner. He has supplied me with an appraisal from 2013, so the appraisal is just a little bit dated from that time. But the appraisal at that time valued the property at $1,450,000, which I thought supported the value that we had. But I do like to hear from Mr. Kirchner to see what he has to say, if he's in the audience. I, I haven't met him.
Mr. Kirchner, come forward.
Okay, you've got this.
Please, please state your name for the record.
Ron Kirchner. I am the sole owner and managing partner of First Street West Retail. Do you want me to just present my case, or do you want to ask me questions? How do you want to do this?
Go ahead and present, then we'll have questions.
Well, the property, the reason I'm asking for an abatement, the property was the true and full value on the real estate statement in 2014 was $1,199,300. 2015, it shot up to $1,505,000. And this is during the period when the oil prices went down and I was starting to lose renters. In 2016, it was $1,498,000. Net result is my taxes went up $2,000 from 2014 to 2015, and then another $100 in 2016. The appraisal, in talking to Joe, we'd never met before, hi Joe, I suggested that most of the time when I've had home properties or commercial properties, the assessed value has always been less than the actual appraised value. And the only support I have for the actual appraisal is what was done in 2013. The, where was I going with that? In talking to Joe, he suggested that they try to keep the assessed value at 90 to 91%. Is that correct?
The state requires a tolerance be from 90 to 100%.
90 to 100, okay. Well, anyway, I was looking at this based on the appraised value in 2013. That would make that, that value at 90%, $1,350,000. If, if this is 90 to 91% based on $1,500,000, then the actual value would make it $1,666,000. And I'd sell it in a minute for that. But that's, that's my whole case. It just went up sharply, went up 20% from one year over to the next. And that seems, you know, seems like kind of an arbitrary number, and I'm trying to understand why.
So your, your request is to change the value to $1,350,000?
Right.
Currently at $1,500,000. 90% according to state law would get you down to that $1,350,000.
I currently have it listed. I have, since I filled that out with Joe, I decided to sell it because it's just, I live in Minnesota, Trade Lakes, and it's a long, a lot, lot to deal with, especially with the renter. Right now, I'm up to four renters. I was down to, I have one potential fifth renter, which would make it very saleable. But last year was a real struggle, especially with the taxes going up. I was down to two renters at one time, so it cost me a lot of money out of pocket just to keep the thing going. So I'm just applying for mercy.
Any more questions?
Mr. Hirschfeld, what would, what would your argument be to not? I don't want to say this. We, we can't lower everything we feel that 100% down to 90%, correct?
That is correct. That 90 to 100%, that is based on the median of the sales of that year, not every individual property. I do have a property record card for this property in there, and if you look in 2013, the assessed value was $1,101,000. So we were well below that $1,450,000 that the appraiser had. Now granted, an appraisal is an opinion of value, so the appraiser that he had, it was his opinion that it was $1,450,000. Whereas Vanguard, in trying to equalize properties across the city, came in at $1,500,000. I mean, we're 3% or less, and in mass appraisal, that's outstanding to be, to have that kind of a tolerance. I mean, we've talked about in the past, residential properties have a plus or minus 7.5% variance throughout the year, depending on seasonality and what the market is doing. So, you know, I, I'm very comfortable at 3% that, that $1,450,000, you know, I think, you know, was probably a very solid number at that time, and I didn't look at the appraisal real hard, you know, I kind of looked at, but, you know, I was pleased with what I saw, and I thought it supported the, the effort that Vanguard had in valuing those properties for 2015.
That was also when it was fully rented. Right now, I can't get the rent at that rate anymore. So I had five full rent, that was at the max. Rental properties, appraised value, or sales value has a lot to do with how much your, what your rental is and how many renters you have in there, if you're full or not full.
And that's a good point, and I don't want to discount that, but the, the time period we're looking at is for 2015 and what the market was then. You're talking about the current market, which would be a more current value for 2017 or 18 even.
Right, but
Which keep those marketing periods.
I think everybody that had rental properties in the city at that time lost a lot of renters in that 2014, 2015, 2016. And anybody I talked to that's got apartment buildings or any other type of rental property are suffering. Is that correct?
I thought that 2014, we were, we were peaking at the market.
I don't. I don't know. I can't remember, I don't have the timetable down that well.
Any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld or? Questions, comments?
Did you provide your current financial statement?
I don't know if I was asked to.
The retail properties haven't been part of that income study yet. But if we get done with these abatements, that is on my list of things to do, those in metal buildings.
The reason this was appraised in 2013 is I had a partner, Gary Kraft, who was the builder, and I bought him out at that time, so the bank called for an appraisal.
Sure. I mean, what, what are you seeing in your differences in gross rent? I mean, from '14 to now?
Gross rent, well, on a monthly basis, at the peak, I was at just under $13,000 a month. Currently, I'm with the four, I got four renters, I'm more like in the $10,000 range. And I'm looking, have a potential renter right now that would really help a lot, in this sense, it would help me sell it.
And your leases are all triple net?
They are. So then this obviously gets passed on to the renters.
All, all your leases are triple net?
That's correct. But then, when I don't have the full, all the renters, and I have, you know, I have, I've had to pay most of it last year out of my pocket.
So 2015 assessed value is $1,501,400. Your abatement request of $1,350,000 with 10% change, but the value is supported by your own data comes in at $1,450,000.
And at that peak, right?
So you still ask for us to go down to?
$1,350,000.
$1,350,000.
Based on the 90 to 91% that I talked to Joe about.
So you're still asked to go down to $1,350,000? Mr. Hirschfeld, is, is that number $1,450,000 based on the owner's data? Is all his data correct? Would you confirm that?
I certainly didn't put that much diligence into that. A lot of those, I really tear them apart. I had several properties to try and get through for tonight, and I, I know the, the appraiser somewhat, know that they do a pretty decent job, so I took the value kind of out its face.
It's a 110-page document, so it's not like reading a novel.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I would seek a motion to either deny or accept an abatement request or change the value of this property at 16, parcel 1670-3400-0100.
Not much to go on here on that. Support the $1,350,000 from where I'm sitting here. I would move to deny the request for a change in value.
A motion to deny.
And the thing we've got to remember is for 2015, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
We have a motion to deny in a second. Any other questions?
Have we?
Or comments?
Have we determined the 16 value? Assessed value? Has it changed any from 15?
The 2016 value did not change from 2015. That would be typical
It went down, it went down $3,000, but the taxes went up.
A slight change for depreciation, but no, no other change. That would be typical for other similar retail.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to deny a change in value and a second. Hearing no questions or comments, we'll vote on the denial of, for the change of value. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is denied.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have?
We still need to act on the 2016
Oh.
Abatement application as well.
He has a 2016 in here also, okay. I guess he left. No, that was just 15, so now you have 16.
Well, it's the same discussion.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, comments on the property or the value for 16?
Mr. President, in lieu of the assessed value at a decrease, I would also recommend that we deny.
We have a motion to deny 16 abatement. Not hearing a second, then I would look for a different motion.
I just got some.
You have some questions?
Yeah. So we're comfortable with our 16 value? Based, I mean, he hasn't supplied us with any income data?
No income data. I haven't asked for the income data from that class of properties. 2016 was a difficult year for valuation, simply that those properties that sold, sold right at assessed value, so there really wasn't any change in the market for the properties that sold. We did notice increasing vacancies in apartments and a little bit in hotels at that time. So we were seeing some decreases or some, some effect to the market. There just wasn't anything measurable that the state requires us to follow. And so my recommendation at that time was that no change be made to those properties other than apartments that year. And there was very little change made of those, just due to the lack of wiggle room, if you will, in that, that sales tolerance that we have between that 90 and 100%.
We do have an owner-supplied appraisal for 14. We do have an owner supplied appraisal for fourteen, one point four five.
The, the income data, I don't have it right in front of me, but it'd be less than twenty-five percent of what it was the year before. Because I was, I was down to two renters, the majority of the year, the renters I did, new renters, I didn't start paying rent till September. They were doing some construction. I had the hair salon. I, you know, I could supply that if you really wanted to get it, but I don't have it right in front of me.
I'm okay with his appraisal from 2013. I think that was probably right on. But now we're talking 2016, there's a lot of difference. You know, occupancy, rental rates, I mean, there's a lot of difference.
I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. The issue that I have, though, is when you describe what is the market values, you know, willing buyer and willing seller, we didn't have any market data to determine that. That wasn't accurate still. I mean, sure, income was down, but are you going to sell based on that? You're still hoping that oil will come back? And there wasn't anybody willing to sell at a discount in that market.
But I also look at all the vacancy. We have strip malls in this town, similar to this property, that have sat empty since construction or close to empty. So, you, you've got a lot of, a lot of people looking for that one tenant.
And the twenty-sixteen value, remember, is based off of 2015 information. So, we weren't quite to that point where we had those vacancies yet. We're always trailed that year behind. So, the fiscal year 2016 for 2017, we certainly saw more of that, yes.
You just drive around, you've got the one out at Roars, you've got Oliver Commons, you've got the one that Castle, like he built. I mean, those all had empty spots in them.
More so now than they did in 2015, yes. And that should, you know, over time, start to work out. But based upon the sales that the state has reviewed, our sales tolerance, those sales that we had still indicated that properties were selling for what they were worth. So, absent any other data, the assumption is that this property would as well. That's the guidelines that we follow.
We had a motion to deny with no second. So, what I would look for is a new motion. Mr. Castle?
Could I ask a question, please? Mr. Hirschfeld, do you have adequate time, based on the timeframes, that you have to submit your data to the state to table this particular item so that we can get income data from the owner? He seems to, you know, to be willing to supply-
I'd be willing to supply. I haven't been asked for it.
Right. I, I'm not sure if your timeframes allow for that. But it, it appears that the commission wants additional data. And if I'm wrong, let me know.
And this may be a better question for Attorney Kryp, but the way I understand, I have sixty days to start this process. So, we are within that. I don't know that we have a timeframe to get through this, as long as we're all still working together. Within reason, I'm sure we don't want to wait six months for the information to get here for us to act on it either.
I think if we would reschedule the hearing at a set date so that our applicant knows when to provide that data by, and if there's data provided, then the commission can consider it. And if not, then we would still have to comply with our deadlines, but it would give the applicant an opportunity. Does that make sense?
I think that would be fair. We could table this.
So, what data did you want? Did you want 2014, fifteen, and sixteen, or fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, I prefer to see at least three years if you can provide it.
Okay. I live in Detroit Lakes, and just, you know, just with the timetable you're working with, my, my wife is having her hip replaced in first week in October, and I'm having my second knee replaced in late November. So, I don't need to work about some recovery time.
You don't have much to stand on.
Yeah, well, yeah, a lot of ways. But, yeah, so I need, I need to work around that because I'm going to have to be a caregiver.
May I make another suggestion? Since this is 2016, and we have a whole nother year before the timeframe passes, when you're eligible to file this, that you could pull the application at this time and refile it at a later date?
Well, what, what day would you be looking at? I'd rather, you know, I did that last year, too. That's why I have 2015 now, because I didn't understand the abatement process. I didn't even know what it was. I had to look it up on Google. But, and then we, we were scheduled, we have a condo in Florida, so we were gone for two months. And there were a lot of things I couldn't work around there. Might be easier this fall if I get it done, but, you know, with some, sometime in October-
Could you provide it within a month, the information?
I can probably provide it-
That would be within the-
I can provide it in a couple of weeks. How often do you meet?
It's not the information, it's just him getting back here, I think, because we're just trying to, the point he's trying to make.
Yeah, and the deadline that Mr. Hirschfeld is talking about is the sixty days from application to decision. That's what's in state law. So, we're trying to find out if you have the ability to waive that sixty days, because I'm sure we're well into that as we speak. So, waiting another two months would obviously exceed that sixty days window.
So, you'd rather go into next year's, I may not own it next year. Hopefully, I won't. I'll probably try to sell it, but.
Are you currently marketing it for sale?
Yes. Olivia Wellingstein has the list.
You want to tell us what you're asking for?
Well, you know how you do, you know how you do things when you ask for things? You, you don't, you don't start low and hope they raise the price. So, I'm a million four fifty. And if I get that fifth hundred, it'll probably be worth that at that point. Still waiting for some information from.
Okay, Commissioner's-
I'm making a motion to table it, but that would be if we can work out the timetable.
I'll withdraw my first motion if we can take the word.
Do we know what kind of timetable from the application, the sixty days?
I, I don't. I, I don't recall that there, there, I'm assuming that the intent was that it would probably be concluded the, the night of, that action would be taken. But as I understand it, it is, it must be heard within sixty days. So, we've, we've done that. We've scheduled it for that. So, continuing, you know-
So, are we right at the end of the sixty days?
I don't have the application with me tonight. I don't believe we're at the end of sixty days with this one. The, the concern that I have is even if we have the financials, we don't have any other data to compare it to, to know what the effect on market value would be. I mean, a twenty-five percent decrease in value, and income doesn't necessarily equate to a twenty-five percent decrease in value. And, you know, how, how are we going to verify that the, the amount of change that the market had based off just the change in income?
I believe the date is June twenty-seventh. We have the applications with us. So, June, it would be sixty days.
So, we, we are right near the end of sixty days on this.
Joe, didn't you, didn't you just say it ought to be heard? And you've been heard now? So, we can, you know, aren't we a pet? So, haven't we done that?
Since it's been heard, is it allowable to be outside the sixty days?
I could get that data to you that you asked for by the end of next week. That's not, you know, so. First couple of weeks in September. I don't know. How often do you folks meet?
Every two weeks, first and third Monday of the month.
First Monday of September would be what day?
It'd be Tuesday then.
It'll be Tuesday because of Labor Day. So, I think it's the fourth, the fourth or fifth.
I thought the fifth was the-
And if we're looking at-
It was our meeting.
Me doing a, an income study on similar type properties, we may need several weeks to, to accomplish that. Because I don't have that database of information to fall back on at this time.
So, we would be within, by tabling this, we'd be okay within the parameters, since it's been heard, within sixty days?
Oh, good.
Okay. So, do you have more?
I make a motion that we table it.
Table it till we get further data?
Second.
In a second. Any other questions or comments? We'll vote to table this till next month. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
It is tabled.
Do I get the data to Jill in the end?
Yes, get, please get it to him as soon as possible.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Then you can get to work on it. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Royal. Mr. Hirschfeld, you have any comments?
Thought we'd start with the West River properties. They're a little bit different than the rest of the properties owned by Mr. Royal. These are, I believe it is nine townhouse style properties that he owns. And at, at this time, and I could adjust as well with Mr. Kirsch's, too, but if you look in your front pocket, there's this blue sheet of paper. This has the list of properties I thought we could go in order with. It has the assessed value in the first column, the requested abatement amount is in the next column, the percent change, and then the values as supported by owner's data. And that was with the last property, that appraisal. And with these properties, it would be based off of the income spreadsheet that Mr. Royal sent to us. The West River properties, in my mind, are a little bit different, as each one of these are, are individually assessed and could be sold separately. And Mr. Royal's data shows them as a portfolio of multiple properties. However, the highest best use would be to split these properties and sell them individually than it would be to group them. I think that would have an effect on what the, the individual value would be. I think it'd have to be discounted for having multiple properties. And based upon this type of property, I don't know that that discount would be warranted. So, I would like to move forward with, with that thought. And Mr. Royal, or Mr. Sickler, I guess it is?
Let's state your name. You're representing Mr. Royal?
Ah, yes. Good evening, President Decker and members of the commission. I'm just going to talk very briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Royal. I just wanted a couple of house cleaning matters, actually, is the only reason why I'm here. This weekend, when reviewing Mr. Hirschfeld's report to the commission, it became apparent that there were some incorrect numbers stuck in for several properties on the 2015 applications. What had happened, the 2016s were turned in first, and then the numbers were just carried over as to what the, the applicant's belief as to the true value was. So, we submitted the applications this morning, showing the corrected numbers on those. And Mr. Hirschfeld and Mr. Royal have exchanged some communications today as to whether or not we want to pull those applications and resubmit it for those particular properties or not. I just wanted to clarify that we're, we're not asking that those be pulled. Rather, what had happened, the number, the correct numbers are actually lower than, or excuse me, are higher than, than what was put in. So, it's to the benefit of the city. It's not to the, to the benefit of Mr. Royal. And he'll be able to show you exactly, as you go through each one of these properties, what those are. So, we want to just move forward with that and ask, invite the commission to come up with the value that they deem appropriate on those properties. Just one piece of backdrop on the, the law aspect of this, because I think it's going to be important as, as this discussion goes on, as to these various properties. I think it's important to remember that one thing the law says, as North Dakota statutes, is "All assessors and boards of equalization shall place the values of all items of taxable property at the true and full value." And then the statute goes on to describe what true and full value is. And it says, "True and full value means the value determined by considering the earning or productivity capacity, if any, the market value, if any, and all other matters that affect the actual value of the property to be assessed." So, just by the nature of, of those, that language, the, the process is arguably adversarial. But that's not the goal here. The goal of the law is to be adversarial. The goal is, is to, to have us all come to the true and full value of that property. So, I just wanted to kind of lay that as a backdrop. And with the, the commission's approval, I'd have Mr. Royal come up and answer any specific questions on these properties.
Any questions for Mr. Sickler?
Do I get these? I have a little quick, two-page summary of the numbers. Oh, okay. I'm Carlos Royal, and I represent or own the properties that we're talking about. These are known as West River. I think one of you have my notes.
I believe I have your notes here.
Thank you.
And I don't know if we want to talk about these individually. This particular property is, I bought them as rentals. They were rentals before I bought them. As far as I know, they'd been rentals from the day they were bought. And so, I don't have much to say about that other than I understand Joe's point. But as far as I'm concerned, they're like the other properties that I have here in Dickinson. And in all the discussions, I never considered them as residential. All my income and expenses have always been that. But what I'd like to do is just cover all the properties and just give you, we'll just go through them. And then you can decide. Because my goal here is, is what Randy said, is just to reach the truth and the value of the properties. It's not adversarial. I've always tried to give, different than most owners, I've always shared all the information, actual income and expenses, with the assessor. I've sent him emails as to what's rents, what's market conditions, and what's happening. I've also just recently let him know that it appears that rents are flattening out, thank God. And that with winter around the corner, we may be in for another downward spiral. But for right now, rents are flattening out. The last time I was here, we came close to correcting my assessments, values. One of the commissioners started to make that recommendation. This time, I hope we get there. I've been paying taxes here in the city of Dickinson for thirty-two years. The first time, this is the first time I have complained. So, you know this is a big deal for me. And my values are not off just a little bit. I'm not here to complain about the amount of taxes. I'm here only to get my properties' values to their true fair market value, because as stated in the 2016 state guidelines for appraising properties in North Dakota, it says, "Any time a property is not assessed at its fair market value, it creates an unfair and inequity in taxation." During the boom here in Dickinson, residential properties doubled in value, while apartments doubled, tripled, and even quadrupled like century. Taking on a larger portion of the tax burden, and rightly so. But now that apartments have busted, that the burden must be reduced, just as it was increased. Apartments and commercial helped drive down the mill rate from four hundred and twenty-one point two-two in 2008. And I use 2008 because the boom started in 2009. From four hundred and twenty-one point two-two to two hundred and seventeen point oh-seven by 2015, which was, I consider that the bust year for oil, a decline of fifty-one point five-three percent. The city mill rate went down from ninety-eight point five percent, I mean, ninety-eight point five to forty-one point six-four, a fifty-eight percent decline. And I'm going to ask that each property be considered separately and in, on its own merits, because each property is unique. Its values, the values often vary in amounts and percentages. Market data per unit could give you a value that you could apply across the board, but not a percentage value. As pointed out by the assessor and Randy, when we filed the 2015 application, an error was- was made because we picked up the 26 value and just put it on the 2015 instead of picking up the correct. But all the data, all the information that I have supplied to you and to the assessor are correct numbers, and they're actually higher, not lower. So I'd be asking for a lower abatement. And we've corrected that with new applications. However, all supporting data I have provided the assessor over the past weeks was based on the correct values. And unlike, I'd say, some owners, over the years, over the past 32 years, I've submitted actual income and expenses every time requested by the assessor. And as I said, I've kept the assessor up to date. I don't mind paying my fair share. I just would like my properties assessed at their fair market value. I have ordered independent appraisals on all the properties. The first one came in last Friday. I forwarded it to the assessor. It was for Park Place. If you remember, we talked about it the last time I was here. It came in at $348,000, or $29,000 per unit. This just justifies what I've presented and what I've been telling you. The other appraisals I expect to come in soon, and hopefully will be here by the first week of September. The oil boom bust started in 2009, and the bust was 2015. We're now in the bust mode, we're the bust market. Apartments is different than the oil, though. Is apartments started in 2009, but due to excessive building of new apartments, apartment boom began to show signs of a bust as early as 2013 as apartment incomes peaked. For example, 8th Avenue, which was one of my apartments, actually peaked in 2012. Apartments started to show up on the market offering 15% and 20% yields, or cap rates, as early as 2013. In fact, I can remember one ad in the paper, which was kind of laughable when you think about it today. It said, "20% will sell, 20% yield on last year's numbers." Wouldn't we all like to have sold at a 20% yield on last year's numbers at the peak of the market? Typical oil booms. Now, I've experienced them not only in North Dakota, but Texas. I've visited every shale oil basin in the United States. All of them have the exact same history. Oil booms last five years, takes 20, 25 years to recover, and the asset value drops 75%. I made my first purchase in Dickinson after the first oil boom here in the late 70s and early 82, early 80s. I bought a condo that sold during the peak at $60,000. I paid $15,000 for it. That's exactly a 75% reduction, which Dickinson's going through right now. There's no difference. So what I did after the last meeting that we were here, because I heard one of the commissioners say that a 15 or 20% yield is just out of the question. Not that I calculated that in my numbers, but I actually did a demonstration project, did the cash flow, sent it to the assessor, and it shows that a 20.6% cap rate is required if the investor's going to lose 75% of the asset of the money and earn an 8% return on his investment. Most, during a boom, are living an illusion of wealth. They think they're getting rich, but that wealth disappears with the bust. Apartments busted before the oil boom did. As I said, apartments literally started to decline in value or in income in 2013. I've also given you a quick, little summary so you can see it. We have four fair market sales. And these are as good as you can get. They were advertised, they were listed with a broker, local. They were advertised in every major paper in North Dakota. They were put on the internet, at least that's what I was told, and they were placed on the market. They generated multiple offers. The owner is under no duress to sell, and they sold for $30,000 a unit. There's another sale, which was a public auction, where the rents were similar to market rents, and that one also sold for $30,000 a unit. I would like to point out that Sims, which is Park Place, by the way, or is similar to Park Place, it's identical to Park Place, and it sold for $30,000 a unit. That's $360,000. My appraisal came in at 348. I gave you those numbers, not the 348. I gave you 360 and what the income value was. One was market data and one was income. So now we talk about what's the issue here. The issue is over assessment. And one thing that the assessor did not give you in his memo, he talked about all the properties, but the one he left out is the most egregious. It's the one that is the most over assessed, and that's Century. So I'm going to cover Century first. As you can see it, it gives you the market value. I consider it the same as the income because we have all the data. And I believe I've supplied the income back for four or five years. Whatever that it is, he asked for, I gave it to him. 2013, and some of them I gave all the way back to 2012. If you look, it's over assessed $5,968,968. Now, let me tell you. I bought this property in 2003. Its net operating income was $260,000. I bought it at an 8% cap rate. I paid $3250,000. In 2016, my net operating income was $272,000, basically what it was when I bought it. So that property has gone up, and it has come down. And that's going to be the case in all of this. Now, here's the interesting part. If we assume we've gone up and we've come down, and Joe says we're behind a year, I bought into that. In fact, he said, "We don't have any sales, Carlos. When we get some sales, I'll reduce the values." We have the sales now, but now he says, "Oh, I can't use those. I don't believe that they're really market sales." "Oh, there's not enough time." But these sat on the market for, and I shouldn't say sat on the market, but they were still available out there. They were still negotiating for 87, 85 days. In fact, one of them was negotiated down $6,000 per unit during that period of time due to condition. So now we have the sales, and Joe just refuses to reduce the values to their fair market If we move to 8th Avenue, that one was the earliest to peak. It actually saw its best days in 2012. I purchased that property, and the NOI of this property is only 14% of what it was in 2013. We go to Park Place, and that property was purchased in 2009 for $400,000. This year, the property has produced zero, not one dime of net operating income. Now, I didn't say it has zero value, because what happens is, is that when the income approach, the income starts to go to zero. All that does is tells you is that the income is, that the building is not producing as it should, and you're reverting to land value. Okay? So at some point, you have to quit using the income approach because it just breaks down. But for Park Place, we have an appraisal. We have an identical property that's sold. And I mean identical. Same builder, same size, same square footage, everything. If we go to Silvergate, I purchased this property in 2000, and in 2016, it produced $10,000 of net operating income. And the assessor wants to tell me $10,000 is worth $1,250,000. Now, the last person that was up here, it was a question is, did he produce, did he produce the documents? I have produced income and expense statements to the assessor. Even though the income began to peak as early as 2012 for apartments, assessed values continued to rise, the assessed values continued all the way to 2015 for every property that I own in Dickinson. Now that the income is or below what it was before the boom, if we start out at 2008, and we go up, and we come back down, then the increase needs to equal the decrease. And we can make a one-year adjustment if we want, but we need to start when the properties peaked, not when 2012, this arbitrary, I mean, 2015, this arbitrary date for oil, because that's not when apartments started to bust. They started to bust much earlier. Now, what's interesting, if you look at Century, because I said that's the most egregious, is the assessed value went up $8,679,400 from 2008 to 2015. That's all the increases.
The increase is $8,679,000?
That's the increases, yes. From 2008 to 2015, and I've supplied all the assessments so you can actually see it. If you add up those numbers, I went from...
In 2016, you showed $10,929,500.
No, I'm talking about what the increase is, just the increase. From 2008 to 2015, it went up $8,697,400. But you've only decreased it, I say you, I'm talking about the assessment now, has only been decreased $3 million bucks. Yet we are four years past when that property peaked, so there's no question that we should already be where we need to be, yet, and Joe mentioned to me, "Well, we need to collect for the taxes we didn't get when we were behind." I said, "Okay, let's look at that." So he's not even collecting the taxes with over assessment. He's 2.59 times more in increases than he's decreased it, and we are actually back in Century, not to 2008, but we're all the way back to 2003 in net operating income. And that, and in 2017, it's going to be even less, and I sent him the information that income is going to be down approximately another 17%. If we look at 8th Avenue, the increases over the decrease are 2.3. If we look at Park Place, the increase was much less. It was only went up 160%, and the decrease was 27%, or it's only 2.2 times. But in all the properties, the increases have outstripped the decreases by roughly 2.2 to 2.6 times. My properties are over assessed, and they need to be corrected. That's all I ask this commission to do. I'm not looking to get an unfair advantage. I'm not looking to be adversary. I've offered to work with Joe, sit down, say, "Look, what are the values? Let's agree on what the income is. Let's agree on what the expenses are, and let's come up with a value." I ask the commission to recommend to the county board that they correct my assessments to their, and list them at their true fair market value, as required by Dakota law. All I'm asking is that you recommend they correct them, so that I am not saddled with an unfair burden of taxes.
So you went to the county already?
No, I have not. I have a meeting with the county in October. Each property only pays his fair share of tax burden when their property is correctly assessed. That's the only thing I'm asking for. I'm not arguing about the amount of taxes, only the assessed value be corrected. In making your decision, please consider the following, and these are all statements from the assessment of real property in the state of North Dakota. Errors which are not corrected may result in an unfair and inequity in taxation. The assessor is responsible for determining the true and fair market value of each property. It is the duty of the board to correct any assessment which is not listed as true and fair value. These properties are not listed as their true and fair value, and we know this by the market data. We know it by the income approach, and we know it by an independent appraisal, at least the first one that has shown up verifies the data that I have provided to this board and to the assessor. Errors in evaluation made by an assessor that are not corrected at the local level get difficult to correct later. Any existing inequities will not be corrected by a percentage change for a class of property. You have to do it per property. And like I said, I've ordered independent appraisals on all my properties. The first one's in. The others should be here first week in September, by the first week.
Mr. Hirschfeld, so we're looking at basically two different ways to find the value, the assessed value, right? You're using the cost approach?
And...
And we're talking...
And if you will, Commissioner Steiner, the rest of the commissioners, and President Decker, I have the green sheet here that actually has all three of the values. What I would like to do on these properties is actually get to the time period that's being abated, not the current market. We're hearing about what's going on currently. We're hearing about a current independent appraisal. However, I would like to understand why the independent appraisal that we had done by Vanguard in 2015, it should not be considered. You know, they went through a cost approach. Our system is cost-based. They reviewed the market. They reviewed what income data was provided to them, which, if it was similar to what was given to me, was very minimal. I think I had 11 apartments, or maybe it was 11 total properties. We sent it out to every commercial property, all 1,000, and the returns were horrible. And it's very difficult to rely on an income approach when you don't get the data. And so that's what we were relying on at the time. I mean, who wanted to share the incomes that they were earning at that time with us, fearing that we would raise values through the roof because of that? Well, of course, the market dictated that itself. And if you look at that green sheet in the upper right-hand corner, I show sales of similar type, older apartment buildings that range from nearly $59,000 to nearly $122,000, with the median being a $95,000 per unit, per apartment unit sale price. And I have below there, those market sales out were included from 2013, 14, and 15. And so there's my market data right there. In 2015, that sale there sold, it actually sold twice. I only put one of the sales down, but it sold for $69,000 in March, and then turned it around and sold again in August for $72,000 per unit. And we're being led to believe that we should put $30,000 on the 2015 value, and actually that 2015 sale would be for 2016, not for 2015, because that market, you know, we lagged that year. We review the 2014 data for the 2015 valuation year.
Mr. Hirschfeld, the, um, the sales that are listed, those are, are those complete? There's just been the four?
That's, that's the ones that, that I was, managed to give. I submitted every sale that was found in the data. These, that's the summary, that's the four that are, are comparable, but I actually submitted to the assessor every sale that I found and listed all of them. There were a sale in the $60,000 range, but the rents were twice what market was, and they appeared to be a sale that was created to get rid of an issue. That's the best I can say about it, how to describe it. So I did not consider it. I listed it, it's there. Joe and I discussed that. There were lots of issues with, with, with that sale. What I gave you was all the information. I'm here to get the right number, okay?
And that number you're, you're saying is basically 30,000 a unit in that ballpark?
Yeah, and, in fact, that's exactly what it is. That's what it came out to. Um, now, if you go back and you look at the in, income in 2015, the value of the property is 411,000. You look at it, I've, I presented everything all the way back to 2013 on, on all the properties, and 2012 on some of them. But it's real easy to just pull it up and you can just look at the, the income, so it's income, expenses, net operating income. And if you look at the, the, the value that I came out with for income, based on the income approach, was 411,000. But now he's saying, well, you need to go back another year. I lined all of them up, because that's, that was the way the income came in. So mine are lined up, Joe took the approach that what he wanted to do was shift everything. Okay? So, and, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if that's right or not. My books, way I've always praised property, if it's 2015, use 2015 numbers, and you come out with a value, and you go forward with it. So that's the way everything is, my numbers all line up. And so I believe my numbers are, are right. I believe they really tell you what's going on in the marketplace. You might not like it, you know?
But we're used, we're used to the sales price, or, and we're, we're showing, you know, right around 59,000 for sales price per unit. Anywhere from 59,000 to 121,000.
Well, we know that's not, that, that, that's probably off, because I only paid 400,000 for the units when I bought them.
But you're basically saying that, and these are sales that we have, and they've, yeah.
The, the sales that.
What yours, what were yours in, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Uh, the sales that I provided come from the years 13, 14, and 15, because we do cross over two years here. Uh, there are also, uh, sales that were verified by me and utilized in the sales ratio analysis. When you see data come through, but you're not always able to use it for one reason or another, these were verified sales, and also sales that I utilized in the study.
But we're obviously, the ones that sold for 121,000 are not comparable units.
See, they obviously, there's got to be something there, yes.
Most definitely can, and we can certainly pull the card I have in the back and, and look at that, and see if it looks similar and has a similar utility to, to some of his properties. And granted, that, that's the high end, but the high-end valuation that we had for Mr. Royal's property was 104,000, so we're well below that. The median was 95.
So the 121 would be a similar age property with similar units?
Uh, the, the, $121,000 per unit sale occurred in 2014, was built in 1968, was eight units.
That's where I struggle. We, we have one approximately, well, call it 60,000, and you're looking for.
Well, the sales here are four sales that are market, and I mean, you couldn't ask for more arms-length transactions, it's public, right, these are all public record.
Mr. Royal, the years we're talking about is 2015. The sale occurred in December of 2016. We cannot utilize these sales. I did not have December of 2016 sales available to me in 2014.
Yeah.
We, that's why we have to pick a year and we have to.
We have income and expenses for these properties. I've provided that to this board and to the assessor, all the way back for sure to 2013, and on some of them, all the way back to 2012. And over the years, where he says that, uh, it's difficult to get income and expenses, I've provided actual income and expenses on these properties, detailed, everything. I have a property management that does it, I just tell them to print out the, the report and send it to them. You know?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Royal, I, I think we got the gist.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Royal or Mr. Hirschfeld?
I'm not an expert in this. And I'll be the first one to admit that, but we got a lot of discrepancy from 10% difference and change to 91%, to 75% all across the board here. You're asking for 30,000 a unit, and I, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. You know, I, I think it's higher than 30,000, and for me, it's probably around 60,000. And, and again, that's just, that's my own concern.
What we do have to look at is the timeframe, though.
Yeah, I don't.
That is what we have to, that is the biggest parameter, is the timeframe.
I'm looking at everything here. I don't know if we're gonna go through each individual one at this time and, and arrive at any conclusion that's... My, my thought is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this would get, if we decline this here.
You will appeal to the county?
His option is to go to the county.
Yeah, well, either, or you, or you can do the opposite. You can, you can not pick a number and just recommend that the county.
If I'm gonna side on the issue, I gotta side on the issue.
I'm only looking for the right number.
For our appraiser.
Yeah.
You know, so, correct me if I'm wrong, you, you know more than I do here. If we deny the, uh, it'll push it to county. And if county denies it, then it goes to the state. Personally, I think this is where it's going.
You know?
I can't speak for how they would vote right now, but there's an awful lot of numbers here, and the thing that sticks out in my mind is that 30,000 per unit, when we have sales not less than 58,750.
Okay, think about this, okay? And I know you're having trouble with it, because it's hard to realize that an asset can go from one value to another in a short period of time and only have a 25% remaining. If the property took and peaked in 2013, by 2015, it's already down, okay? That's what I, I pointed out. If what goes up, it comes down, you should be at that number. Now, you, the, the problem is, is that the assessor used the oil boom bust instead of the apartment boom bust, and so his dates, he's pushing it out too far. And even if you give him to 2017, he still collected two and a half times the upside to the downside. And when, and if you look at the, the number, it's about 25% of what it was when it peaked. And I agreed with, I didn't come in and complain when those numbers were up, you know? I'm, I'm not a guy that comes in and complains if things are close, I just don't, I've been here 32 years.
Can we talk about the West River property?
Yeah.
2016? Uh, you know, your assessed values are anywhere from 116.3 to 125.4. Basically, the same units, I think. And your, your abatement request takes them down to 86,000, 91,000, 87,000, et cetera. You know, 26% across the board, it looks like. I know there's Realtors here, are there any homes for sale in Dickinson less than 100,000? I mean, when I get my real estate magazine, there's not many there.
And I, I will concede that if, if you sell it as a house, as a houses, that that value may be more. I don't know, but I'll tell you what I did do, because I'm telling you, I'm only looking for the right value. When, when I got Joe's memo, and he said, you should look at this as, as residential property, I immediately sent that note to the appraiser and said, you need to consider what the assessor's saying here. And I sent that to him immediately. So I don't know what the value's gonna come back, but I can tell you that I've ordered the appraisal. And the only information I gave the appraisal was the request for my appraisals was, I mean, these are to be used at the city, the county, and maybe court, which is what you're suggesting.
That's what we've always asked people to do, is, you know, if you have an appraisal.
Is your appraiser local?
We appreciate that.
Uh, no, he's not. I tried to hire what I would consider a local appraisal, in other words, in, in, uh, North Dakota.
Where, where's your appraiser from? I don't need the story.
South Dakota, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But I can tell you that they've been praising property here, they've praised these same properties before for Wells Fargo Bank. I mean, they knew when they were worth $3 million and, and $10 million, and, yeah, so, I mean, they're really familiar with.
We're gonna make a decision here.
You, you have your appraiser, like you said, and ours is Vanguard. Have you ever come up against them, I mean, why, why is there such a big difference?
I don't even know who Vanguard is.
Your appraiser and our appraiser.
Yeah, I don't know who Vanguard is, I have no experience with them whatsoever.
Vanguard, they, they've done Minot's for years also, haven't they? Appraisals and?
That, that is correct. Commissioner Steiner, in fact, Vanguard has, I think, nearly three quarters of the jurisdictions in the state now. They've been very helpful to the communities who experienced the boom and trying to get property record cards caught up, you know, with, with shortages of staff, you know, unable to keep up with all of that. They bring in a, an experienced crew, certified general appraisers for commercial properties who, who have that experience, who have been through many of the boom towns, Minot, Williston, Watford City, Tioga. So they've seen the changes that have, that have occurred, you know? They're looking at data, not only in what's in Dickinson, but what else is available to them outside of city limits. So very, very experienced, very professional, and they were the ones who did our 2015 valuation, independent of my office.
And that puts us in a predicament, where we have one appraisal firm coming in with numbers like this, and then we have our appraisal firm that comes in with the numbers that we're carrying. Where does it put us? You know, I, I don't know.
Question from Ms. Kreip, do we need to each individual parcel, or do we include?
I think you can, the best way to do it is to look at them as total.
I was asking, Mr. Royal, I'm asking Ms. Kreip, not you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Kreip.
Are you asking if you want to do each individual unit, or?
Um, well, as they're listed here, we have West River, 2016, then we have, uh, I guess an abatement, is it for, Park Place has two abatements, am I correct in reading this? 15 and 16?
That is correct.
And then you have an abatement for Silvergate, 2015, Silvergate, 2016, again, two years, Century for two years, and then 127th, just one year, Eastwood, one year, and Royal, one year. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Okay. Because we just have to use the, the name of, or do we have to do each parcel?
I think if you can reference the property numbers that are on that spreadsheet, that will make it a little more clear. And then I would recommend doing separate motions for the 15 versus 16.
Okay. I guess I would, we have, uh, we have heard a lot of data tonight on this, so, um, I guess I would look for a motion. Uh, we have a couple different motions, you can move to deny, you can move to accept the abatement request and put a value on it per parcel, or you can move to change the value of the property identified by parcel, and change the value to some other amount.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to deny the 2015 on Park Place, Silvergate, Century, 127, Eighth Avenue East, oh, sorry, that was a 16, apology. So all the 2015 that we're presenting. I believe we had an independent appraiser that used the best marketable data that we had available at the time to come up with a value. So I don't see how we can go back and say Vanguard didn't do something right, because they only had the sales they had.
Okay.
To use to come up with that value, so.
So we have a, a motion to deny on Park Place, 2015, Silvergate, 2015, Century, 2015.
That's it.
For 2015.
Yes, that's correct.
Second.
You have second? I didn't hear that, so, okay. So we have a motion to deny the 2015 for Park Place, Silvergate, and Century. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, more vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny is approved. Now we move to 2016. I, I think you would have some similar comments, Mr. Friedrich, or do you have some comments or questions? Any commissioners?
Do we? So when we, Mr. Hirschfeld, when we look at the value for 2016, were the sales that he is referencing, had they taken place yet?
They had not. The sales that he's referencing would have been utilized in the 2017 valuation that we heard in May.
So those four sales happened in 16?
Late 16, correct.
December 30th, three of them, and then one was October 7th.
The public auction was in October. I mean.
I, I feel comfortable, if you take a look at the West River, 2016, you know, the assessed values are, you know, like I said, across board at 116, 117, 122. I, I don't like his abatement request numbers, but with his own data that he gave us, he comes in 103,445 per unit, which is not 26% of what you're asking for, but looks more like it might be 15 to 17%, somewhere in there. I, I could live with, with that, that abatement to the 103,445 number.
If I may, Commissioner Steiner, I would like to reference, there was a sale in that, those group of townhomes in 2016, that would have been after the date that we're talking about, because that would have been 2015 dates, that property sold for 145,000. If you consider that we're usually down at 90%, you know, that puts us right at that 126, I would say that sale.
And that was, that was done in what year?
In 2016. So it, it would be subsequent to that, so, you know, if we're showing decreases in prices for the 2015 year valuing property in 2016, as this here is, it probably would have been in excess of 145,000 possibly. And we're showing values of, like I said, 116 to 126. I, I would think we're conservative compared to at least that one sale.
With that number, I can see it too.
Commissioners?
Your desire.
I think we, um...
It, it's really hard sitting here when you've never seen the property, other than a picture of the front, you don't know what you're looking.
It's in the book.
Well, yeah, the picture of the front of it, that's it. You don't know what kind of condition it's in.
You know the property, I mean.
We do have them on the screen in front of you here, too, if you need reference.
So these units on West River, they're already lot split?
Correct.
I mean, they don't conform with our new minimum lot requirement, so I was just...
They would be grandfathered in, legal non-conforming, or maybe they are legal, I'm not sure what setbacks are, what the lot sizes are on those.
They're only like 3,500 square feet, and I think we're at, what, 4,500 now? I'd make a motion to deny the 2016 abatements on West River, Park Place, Silvergate, Century... I'd make a motion to deny the 2016 abatements on West River, Park Place, Silvergate, Century, 127th, Eighth Avenue East, Eastwood, and Royal Manor.
I've motioned to deny the 2016 abatement requests. And a second for West River, Park Place, Silvergate, Century, 127th, Eighth Avenue East, Eastwood, and Royal Manor. With a second. Any further questions or comments?
Just some discussion. I mean, it's just really hard for with, I know he's provided us this financial information, but we also have to look at the sales that have happened previous to this valuation, and we didn't have the new sales. Maybe 2017's a different look at that, but as of right now, 2016, I don't know how we bear off of that when we don't have the data that's supported, so.
Any other comments or questions?
The only other comment, I wish we wouldn't abate, tell them to wait and abate two years at a time. It makes it too hard.
State will allow that, will it?
It's confusing.
Well, we're Dickinson and Williston, I mean, we're unusual across the world. I mean, look what's happened, and, you know, I think we're starting to see things go up now, too, and we're talking about them when they're going down, and now we're going to have to address this here in the last six months. Actually flattening out, like you said, and hopefully going up.
Okay. We have a motion to deny the 2016 on the listed properties. With a second. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny is approved. Thank you, Mr. Royal, for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. We finished with the truck route. We're moving on to Public Works. Mr. Prowse is there already, like a ninja.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Just got three updates for you guys to provide tonight. First one is the recycling update. Currently, we are in our draft stages of a contract. We received that last week, late last week, for review. We'd like to have any input that you may have to throw at us for it. So as of right now, we're putting together a contract for curbside collection, processing, and marketing of recyclable materials for the city of Dickinson. We are working with Renaissance Recycling out of Jamestown, North Dakota. They will provide 96-gallon stream side, or single-stream collection carts. Every other week pickup that coincides with our routes. And the fees are starting at 605 per month, per household, plus a 1% admin fee, with a two-and-a-half percent increase each year thereafter. We are looking at bringing it in in two phases. Phase number one being single-family trailer parks and duplexes. Phase number two to follow with apartment complexes and commercial buildings. Along with the recycling, single-stream recycling, we are still considering the elimination of the rear-load route due to duplication of services, physically intensive labor, manpower, that's creating safety issues and concerns in the department. And it would be fair and equitable to all residents as, as we talked earlier, a few meetings back, we do not charge for that rear-load truck. To coincide with that, we are planning to utilize recycling sites a little harder, and as well as bringing in some possible spring and fall cleanup events, and electronics recycling event, which we just hosted here at the later part of July.
Mr. Prowse, can I ask a question before we get too far, as I'm going through this here with you? Contractor responsibility to supply all equipment, labor, and materials necessary for complete automated collection processing. Are you talking about they are going to purchase the trucks?
Correct.
Also, and it's going to be their labor? Where does our increased expense come in if it's going to be all their?
Ours would be on the admin side of it, and it would be the utility billing portion of it. And then we honestly will be answering a lot of the customer service complaints and calls.
And then the follow, or the rear-load truck, I don't think they're going to be picking up recycled. I think you mentioned that it's an increased cost or decreased cost because the recyclers are going elsewhere. But most of the rear-load truck, that's your branches and clippings and anything that's sat outside of the garbage can, correct?
Correct. Anything outside of the container that is provided at your residence right now, the rear-load truck does pick up, with the exception of construction demolition material.
So if we keep the rear loads, I don't see any extra expense than what we have now. I mean, I think, I think that's going to be an issue. I talked to an awful lot of people, and they like that rear-load option, you know, especially during the summer. You know, I know we don't do it during the winter, do we?
We do it year-round.
Year-round, yeah. You know, the summer, I, you know, I could see it more with the long clippings and the branches and the leaves and so on, you know. So I'm kind of struggling with that part of it to get rid of the rear-load option at this time. I mean, if it can't, if I don't see where, it's not going to cost us any more money to keep it, other than what it's costing us now. You know, so that's an issue with me. I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but I know a lot of people like that rear-load. And it's something, I don't know if the other cities do it for their people, but it's something we do, and I think it was something that we were always kind of proud of, that we did do it for our citizens, because they don't know, a lot of them don't know that these other communities don't give their people that option for what they pay in the garbage, you know. So I think we should take another look at that and just see what kind of numbers we have. Number two, I had a couple people stop in to see me, and they might have stopped in seeing you, too. I have to go talk to you about some of these older places, older residential areas in the main part of Dickinson, where they have the alley pickup, the big cans in the alley. They're wondering why they have to give out individual cans. And they're talking about, it's a lot of the elderly people in those residential areas, and therefore it's hard for them to wheel out those garbage cans, and that's why they like the big round ones, you know, the big ones. I don't know if, you know, we've been driving our truck down those alleys a long time, and I think one of our concerns was, are we destroying that alley? But if we don't drive it down the alley, aren't we destroying the streets that are used more than the alley, you know? So that's a couple of issues there. So I think we need to take a look at that. If there's any of those areas where you got two blocks, and it really doesn't hurt to leave those community-type dumpsters in there, I'd say we should look at that.
The problem with the community dumpsters is they get abused and misused. You have, and it happened again this morning, actually, the alley dumpsters did take place. No sooner did the truck go through and dump the cans, I had a phone call about 10 minutes later. Some neighbor went over, completely filled the container up that we had just dumped. Those units are not individually per house.
It might be worse if you go to the smaller containers and you put yourself, end up with them full, you know.
But then it's point-specific to one house, where we can go back and track it. This way, I have no tracking opportunities. I have to go around, I have to visit every house of that neighborhood. They're designed to be used by three to four residents per container. There's alleys that we've added actually additional containers due to the fact of so much volume coming through.
But you can see the concern of elderly people that.
We fully understand that. After the last meeting, I did go, we did go and drive through all the alleys. There are some issues that Mr. Friedrich had brought up with the retaining walls and stuff and such. We will work through those. We have some options that we're discussing right now as to how we're going to handle those areas. As recycling gets implemented, if that's the direction you as commission choose to go, we'll have, the Renaissance Recycling is looking to provide the 96-gallon curbside totes. It would be very difficult for them to provide it if we're providing 300-gallon containers.
At least we're listening to the people coming up with their concerns. I think that's great. Thank you.
And they are great concerns. It's all instances that we have looked at, and we know that we'll have to deal with and work through.
Thank you.
As far as the rear-load route goes, why we keep bringing that up is it's not fair and equitable across the board to all residents. One resident may put their container out once a week, and it may be half-full. The neighbor down the street may have their container out every week, but they could have 40 or 50 grass bags piled up beside it. Those grass bags actually could be hauled to our recycle site, where we can make usable material to, once again, possibly sell back to the city, or keep on-site for when we end up doing final cover at our landfill.
But how do we collect that? If we get rid of rear-load, and they put out their garbage bin, and it's completely full, but they still got 10 bags of garbage there, how do we collect that?
Right now, we pick it up with the rear-load truck.
Right. And if we get rid of rear-loading, how do we collect that?
We encourage the residents to utilize the recycling sites.
Yeah, but it might not be all recyclable.
Grass clippings and leaves are recyclable materials.
I just, that's my.
And, but as I said, it's fair and equitable to being, to all residents. Everybody's paying $13. It's a matter of if you're paying $13 for one can, or $13 for one can and 40 bags.
Mr. Prowse? Every resident has the option to rent a second can, correct?
Correct. And it's at half price of the first container, so it would be 650 per month, per container, for anything addition.
Thank you.
Question for you, Mr. Prowse. If we start implementing the apartments in the commercial, what does that do to the per-month rate? Anything at all? Are we locked in at that 605, since we're going to be providing more material?
As of right now, as I was visiting with Mr. Freibel from Renaissance Recycling, the rate could decrease slightly, but it didn't sound like it would be a significant number. He's trying to put some things together on his side while I was trying to come back to him with some apartment counts and unit counts. I honestly don't feel, my personal feeling is that we go per unit for apartment buildings. We currently treat them as a commercial account. I think there should be a per-charge per container versus going per unit.
So we would deliver 24 containers to like the one apartment building?
I would, I would treat them as a commercial unit, where we would upsize probably to a front-load collection system, similar to what they have now. One container would be designed for recyclables, the other for trash.
But they would be charged great.
And they would be charged a solid rate versus a per-unit.
Well, if you thought you had problems now with people throwing garbage into other people's bins, when you get into an apartment and that one bin is full, it's all going into the recyclable.
And we know that will be one of our biggest challenges.
And one of the discussion was, you can monitor what is going in those trucks. So if you see that a certain site is being abused constantly, well, they're still getting charged for the service, but they're going to lose that privilege.
Correct. There will be a fee structure implemented for abuse, more than likely. And that, again, is going to be a relationship or a conversation I will have with, or we will have to have with Mr. Freibel in Renaissance Recycling, as they will be the ones collecting.
That was in their RFP response, that they would, they have a system in place on the trucks to monitor what goes in, and they would do the monitoring. That was in their proposal.
Yes, it is. It is in their proposal. And also, aside from the camera system that Mrs. Kreip had brought up, they are going to run a Corrado cart, which is a front-load truck, and it's mounted to the front, so they can actually watch what's coming into the container as they're picking it up off the street. Again, one of the reasons why we have to get those recycling containers out of the alleys, those are tandem axle truck, and they're very heavy.
I know the biggest concern from citizens that I hear is one that we're not spreading it to everybody, the apartments and such, which I'm surprised he would say that it would only be marginal, the cost. If we're adding all those apartments, you think it would be, you know, I'm not looking like half, but, you know, 20% would be something to lower rate. And the other thing is kind of what Mr. Steiner said, the ability to move, the elderly to move that recyclable, if they're not moving now, a can, in and out. The rear-load, it's a great service, but I think we're probably that lone island in the state that does it, so.
And the elderly are going to be the ones that recycle. I mean, those, they're the ones that are going to make sure everything is taken care of, but just dragging that out to the curb is going to be an issue, I think.
And to comment more on what Mayor Decker said, you know, when we were discussing the rate structure with Mr.
Freibel?
Yes. You know, when we brought up the apartments, he sounded pretty optimistic that it was going to be quite an increase or decrease, excuse me. So I would like to hear, you know, did you provide him with the numbers that apartments would, or how many apartments we have in Dickinson?
I have not yet, as of the last meeting. I was under the impression to move forward with phase one and phase two as we had presented.
Well, maybe in the contract, we can add some language that just says that this is not, because it reads as it's set in stone, this rate structure. So maybe we can add in this contract that it's negotiable or flexible upon the entry of apartment. Is that possible?
Commissioner Jennings, Trustum, members of the commission, that would be a written amendment that we would have to include. I think right now, the way the contract is written, and I apologize, my tablet died, so I can't cite which paragraph, but I think it's restricted to just the residential right now. And so when adding the apartment service, we would actually have to do a written amendment to that, and then you can reflect the rate schedule. We're also probably going to change the container sizes that they'll provide. As Mr. Prowse said, the individual 96-gallon containers aren't necessarily a feasible or reasonable accommodation for an apartment complex, so we'll have to do some of those things anyway at that point.
I think if we could have some sort of idea what the apartment fee, I mean, once the apartments and commercial are added, what we, at least have an idea what we could be looking at, I think that would be a good selling point to the public, that once we implement this, say the rate goes from 605 to 5, you know, 20% decrease, somewhere in there. Because you are, there seems to be a lot of apartments, so.
Mr. Freibel actually is working with the city of Jamestown right now and getting their recycling program up and off the ground. I will be in contact with him here this week and try to have some discussion in regards to what apartment complexes and commercial.
How's it going in Jamestown?
I haven't really heard a whole lot yet. It's pretty open-ended right now, because it's fresh, it's new.
Okay. So this is basically just a report on the contract, so we can look it over.
Correct.
Any other comments on recycling for Mr. Prowse?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry, over here. One of the things I just want to point out from the legal HR side is the rear-load truck does account for a lot of our employee injuries. So we have a lot of muscle strains, back punctures, and so from a WSI perspective, and employee injury claims, and I, Mr. Stevak isn't here tonight, but from our discussions, that's where a significant number of our employee injury reports come from. So that's probably something we could put together for a future report on this issue, too. Just with the WSI rating, that can be expensive over time, so.
And just a question to add to that, they have to manually or physically load all that garbage, right?
It's all done by manual physical labor. Okay?
Okay. I think that's it for comments on recycling. Solid waste?
Next report I have is just landfill inspections took place last week by the North Dakota Department of Health. All three sites were inspected, and they were very well-maintained. There were no issues or concerns at this time. And the final report I have is the Dickinson Works Customer Service Program that was implemented through Public Works. It's available by website or mobile app. There's currently a little over 200 people that have signed up for the alerts and notifications. I'd just like to encourage the residents to sign up for this program, help get it out there. And we've been trying to hit Facebook with it as well. Basically, it provides collection reminders, alerts, notifications of upcoming events, and proper material disposal information. It's for solid waste, streets, and water utilities, as well as other entities will be able to use it once more people get signed up for it. The plan is during snow removal, when there's water breaks, we can actually send out alerts if it's affecting a certain area or neighborhood. As well as when we're doing snow removal, we can send out alerts and let people know what we'll be doing, when we're going to be coming through, and give them a little better communication with the citizens of Dickinson. So highly encourage everyone to get signed up for that. If they need assistance, they can contact Deborah out at Public Works, and she'd be glad to help.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse? Thank you very much. Moving on to planning, we have rezoning for the Cluwin subdivision. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance.
This is the second reading of ordinance 1638, and it's at the southeast corner of Exit 56, and no other comments have been received on this. Staff and Planning Commission initially recommended approval, and we would do the same at this time.
All right, any questions or comments for Mr. Hadley on this rezone?
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve ordinance number 1638.
And we did have a public hearing the first reading, so, okay.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this second reading, and a second, the second reading and final passage. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing non-vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, approve ordinance number 1638. We have nothing from building and codes. Anything commissioners want? Oh, I guess we have one item Mr. Kessel would bring up for the commission, so.
I am passing out for you just some other information. You've already voted as a commission to pursue the land sale, or potential land sale, south of City Hall, and entertain bids for a parcel of land that encompasses that parking lot. The large piece of paper has the depiction of what that parcel could look like. We would expect that a replat would happen with this property. But I think what I wanted to talk with you most about this evening is parking. I'm sure that's probably going to be one of the issues brought up most in regards to this land sale. And so I've additionally handed out a sheet of paper that has an overhead view of the two main parcels that are owned by the City of Dickinson and used as parking. So if it's front and back on that page, I've just done a visual count myself when you try to overlay the original parcel that I mentioned with the proposed sale parcel. And I come up with about 60 spaces, give or take, that will be lost. It's a little bit difficult to determine the western edge of when, where that parking would be aligned. But it's going to be around 60 vehicles that I think will be lost, or, excuse me, 60 parking places that will be lost if a structure is built upon the parcel proposed for sale. We'll maintain between 15 and 20 parcels on the west side of the lot. This will be closest to, for instance, CRE and those, that property, that building. And we'll also maintain two rows of parking on the south side. And that's where we're proposing that the postal service moves, or customers of the postal service will actually traverse north through the alleyway, and then they'll take a right-hand turn, and we'll just simply turn the diagonal parking the opposite way that it is today. So we'll maintain those two rows of parking, and we'll also intend to create a parking lot north of City Hall. Currently, the estimate is we'll gain around 30 spaces north of City Hall. It could be as high as 35 or 36, but we have a landscape easement that we have to create, and we're implementing that today so that we have a better idea of exactly how many parking places that will host. Now, remember that there's also about 14 places that the public has not had access to because of the signage there for the soil conservation service. So within that 60 that I mentioned, 14 the public hasn't had access to, day or night. Those vehicles, those spaces are taken and have been reserved in the past. So that actually drops the number from 60 down to about 46. And also remember that we have three places preserved for city fleet vehicles in that lot as well. Those lots, or those places also tend to be not available most of the time. Now, and on occasion, they're signed for city vehicles. On occasion, they may be used by the public, but they do at their, they do so at their own risk, I guess. So, so the net loss of parking spaces isn't probably as high as one would think when you first talk about the potential loss of a little over 60 spaces. There's no doubt that there is a loss. We're not denying that there'll be less parking available if the building gets constructed. That is true. But those are the, as best I can lay out for you, the parking loss that is expected. The other thing that I wanted to mention, since you voted to approve moving forward with this project, is in order to make sure that the parking is maintained to the best of the ability, is we should probably move forward with creating the lot north of City Hall prior to the construction happening on this lot. That will open up, as I said, a little over 30 parking places, and move most of, if not all of, city employee or city staff-related parking from this lot to the north side. I anticipate that, assuming the sale happens, that they'll need a construction area during the time that the building would be erected, and I'm also anticipating that to be on the south side, or, excuse me, the west side of the available parking. So even those 15 to 20 spaces during construction are probably not going to be available. So there will be additional loss for a temporary period of time during the construction of that structure itself. So the idea is that we would have to expend some dollars to erect the parking north of City Hall in advance of the actual land sale, the receipt of the land sale happening. We anticipate a minimum of $100,000 from the land sale. The cost of construction of the parking lot itself will be between 50 and 100, depending upon the level of landscaping that our ordinance is required. My suggestion is that we simply do the asphalt now, make allowances for the landscaping easement, and then we can do the landscaping itself once the land sale takes place and we receipt those funds. The funding stream that I would recommend that we use for the construction of that lot would be the Capital Construction Fund. We created this fund when we built the Public Works Building and the Public Safety Center. That fund actually has a fair amount of balance in it. Both of those projects are essentially closed out, and during the budget meetings, we talked about using about half of that fund balance to pay off a couple of our smaller debt requirements, each of those being about $400,000. There's ample dollars remaining in that fund to cover the costs of this parking lot.
To start the parking, so.
Yes, to start it prior to receiving the funds from the land sale. Now, there is the possibility that we could create that north parking lot and not consummate a land sale. That is possible, and I just want to make sure we, you consider that as we move forward with the creation of the north lot. And I guess my request tonight is, we would like to move forward with creating that north parking lot and utilize that fund that I mentioned to make it happen. If you're opposed to that, please, please let me know now, and we can avoid, we'll wait to create the north lot until the funds are receiveded.
You need a formal motion?
I think so. It's going to involve the expenditure of funds, yeah, so I think so.
I like a discussion that, you know, I would be in favor of getting going on the north lot here. However, I'd really struggle selling that partial land out there until we at least have additional parking that replaces each space we lost. I just don't want to turn 25 additional vehicles with no place to park. And then when you put that business down there, and then he's got more additional vehicles that aren't going to have a place to park. I think we have to exhaust every avenue there is for additional parking, whether we contact individuals across the kitty corner from the street, or whether we tell them if they want to buy that lot, they put underground parking in it, or above parking in it, or whatever, which might throw it out, throw it out or whatever. But I don't feel comfortable with netting a minus 25 to 30 lot.
I think we have other options, though. We have that, the old City Hall, that we could also use some of these funds towards.
But they're parking there already, see, so.
Well, not in the dirt part.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, and then, you know, 14 of these are, you know, eaten up by those permitted, so. I do think we need to move forward, though, on this back here, creating, regardless...
I would agree.
We're going to need downtown parking, and if we can shift city employees back there, regardless of what happens up here, we're going to need the parking.
For me, I'd really like to see an actual site plan. See, I mean, until that is actually drawn out, this parking lot's all combobulated now, and it's hard to get in and out of, and I'd like to actually see a site plan that shows the footprint of a building there, or that whole lot, and then how we're going to rearrange the parking. That lot is full every day, so.
Mr. Friedrich, we can certainly do that for you. Just, I can verbally kind of tell you how the parking will flow. On the lot that is on the west side, essentially...
Talking this?
Correct, that one, yes. So we're not intending to change the point of ingress and egress from the street. So you'll essentially come in, travel to the east, and then where the building line is, you'll turn around and come back. So you'll still have all the parking on the north and some of that parking in the center. So it'll, you'll do a U, I guess. And then on the south side, we'll maintain the, I know this is hard to see. We'll maintain the row of parking that you actually can't see because of the building footprint that's there. These are the lily pad apartments. So we'll maintain the row of parking that's there, and the row across from it, across from the drive aisle. So in between those will be the drive aisle for the postal service drop-off site. So that, that is how that parking will, or that flow will happen. But we can certainly show that better on a site plan for you.
And you said something will change the direction?
Correct, right now, these, these, excuse me, these parking, the flow will go like this, and the lots will be just, or the places will just be reversed.
So to get into those parking spots, you'll have to come out through the alley by the post office?
Correct, that's correct, yep. That'll be your only point of ingress, yes.
I guess, just a comment, you know, I had a lot of citizen input following the last meeting, and I wasn't aware that we were going to discuss this, so. I know they looked at the agenda and didn't think that we would be talking about the parking issue. So maybe you can give us a report on the next commission meeting so that the public can know and come tell us kind of their thoughts, and they can see the structure as well, or what's being suggested.
Certainly, and I can also provide the site plan that has been requested as well.
I think that would be appreciated by the public. But the one thing I think we do need regardless to move on is this lot north here.
I'm in total agreement with that.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess I would look for a motion to approve, do we have to put a cap on?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Look for a motion, I guess my idea is, Mr. Kessel basically said it's going to be between 50 and 100. Maybe we put a cap at 100?
I'd make a motion that we move forward with this parking lot back here with spending no more than 100.
$100,000.
Second.
I think for comparison, you can take a look at the one across the street by the City Hall that was, by the old City Hall that was paid, I think that was right around 100 grand.
You would, Mr. Steiner, it was a little less than that, but...
It was less than that, that's even better.
But the landscaping easement wasn't actually created in that lot, so.
Okay, we have a motion to start the lot, spending no more than $100,000, with a second. Any further discussion, questions? Mr. Kessel? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to approve the parking lot to the north of City Hall is approved. And then you will get us a report with a building schematic and kind of a better layout of, to the south here.
Yeah, just a site plan that shows how we're going to flow, and the engineers should be able to put that together.
Yep, that's fair, that's easy, yep.
Anything else from commissioners? Move on to public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have a public issue, please come forward, state your name, and let the city commission know about your public issue. We see no one from the public has any concerns. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.